All right, good afternoon, everybody. I want to call to order the Wednesday, May first, a meeting of the Town Council Study Committee. We go through the hybrid meeting outline here. Let's see, public participation, public participation guidelines. Members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting must use their full name for Zoom or in-person access. If full names are not used, people will not be allowed to participate in the discussion. The town reserves the right to remove any member of the public from the meeting who doesn't use a full name or acts inappropriately. This is the Zoom, this is the hybrid meeting using Zoom and in-person participation. Attendees must read, well, actually, that's wrong, not that one, sorry. Attendees, attendees will join in listening mode. They can press the raise hand button if they wish to speak. And I will call on those who have raised their hands in the order that they were raised. All questions should be directed through the chair. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter. This is Joe Grousne, I'm the chairman of the Town Council Study Committee. Permit me to confirm that all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Jeffrey, here. Rachel.
Here.
Okay, Curtis, Caroline.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Joe, I. Okay, sorry, I didn't listen to that. No, okay. We have no staff over town on the call today. Anticipated speakers, which are the folks from Collins. I can ask you to respond to the affirmative, Mel? I see you. All right.
Here, sorry.
Patricia?
Here.
Thank you. Anthony?
Jeff, someone wants to get in.
Sure, all right. Okay, introduction, it's a remote meeting. Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Town Council Study Committee is conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, ensuring public access to not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will fit, will feature public comment and questions. This meeting, the Town Council Study Committee is convening by video conference as well as in person, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business. I ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go through the members of the committee inviting each to, by name to, and never does formal, inviting each name by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called.
I think it's to take attendance, you could, if you don't want to read that whole thing.
Skip it. Yep. Time to do that. Back to Jeff.
I just don't.
They don't do it at all.
No.
They just take attendance by all these days.
All right, okay, first, the agenda item is acceptance of the agenda. I have a motion to accept the agenda. Okay, Jeff?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Art, Curtis.
Hi.
Caroline.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Joe, I. The Town Council Study Committee is being recorded. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes that I sent around yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a minute?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thanks.
All right, Jeff?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Curtis?
Hi.
Caroline? Kelly? Joe, I. All right. We have basically two agenda items today. Following our meeting of April 17th, Caroline and Jeff and I met with the folks from the Collins Center to talk about kind of agenda items, and I think the, the suggestion put forward by Rachel to look at some hypothetical examples of how open town meeting, or for that matter representative town meeting, and town council forums might handle different kinds of issues that come before them. And so Anthony and his colleagues have done some work on this, and I think their first part of our meeting will be to listen to what they've got to say and see what we gained, gather from that. So Anthony, can I turn it over to you?
Thank you. First, at the start, let me just say that I've been experiencing some audio issues today. So if at any point you can't hear me, or my sound goes low, feel free to raise a hand or just interrupt. So I'll make an adjustment. So, yes, we had that conversation about doing some scenarios for the committee. We've got two documents that we want to go through with the, with the committee. We've been sort of tweaking that language right up until this morning. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through the document with the committee. You guys can follow along on the Zoom. I'm going to share screen. And then probably at the end of the meeting, we will send that probably through you, the chair, to be circulated. So it's something that everyone will have. We're just going to go through it on the screen now. The two documents cover sort of two areas. The one is got scenarios about how some particular issues might go through the different processes in the various forms of government. And then the second document is on public participation. How the public, the formal procedures that some charters include to allow the public to be involved. Before we get into them, just one sort of note of clarification. The scenarios that we created are very broad, very general. And also the processes are also sort of very broad and very general. As we've said before, charters can vary and vary, do vary significantly from community to community. So we've identified sort of the, the, sort of the, sort of baseline standards. But some charters do allow more, I guess you could say, more steps in the process to have public input. Some allow less. It sort of went with the standard in each form. Similarly, and Pat will sort of say, say this more, but in the public citizen participation piece, there are, there are other avenues, sort of informal or unofficial avenues for citizens to engage with their government. So these, when she goes to the formal channels, that's not going to mean that you're strictly, citizens are strictly required to follow these processes to, to, to get engaged with government. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mel, and I'm going to share my screen. The first document has two scenarios and shows how these scenarios would be addressed under the various forms of government. So I will share screen now, and I will, Mel, feel free to start.
Thank you, Anthony, and good afternoon, everyone. This, this exercise is sort of a modification of our, of our matrix exercise that we were going to do at our last meeting where we would start to talk about these various forms of government. But what we decided to do with the input of your committee is develop some actual scenarios that would be, that we will go through, how it would be handled in a council form of government, and how it is currently handled either as your open town meeting, and we, we, we have some ideas about a representative and how we'll work on a representative town meeting. I think how I will do this is as I'll go through the first scenario, I'm not just going to look at the council by itself and then go to the town meeting. I think we'll, we'll, we'll kind of go back and forth as, as we go through this scenario. So let me explain the scenario a little bit. Scenario is a very complicated land, land use issue, a development issue. It incorporates many aspects for the town's consideration. It's essentially a private development, a private developer who owns property next to some town-owned land. And this developer has approached the town with the, the offer to, to develop in cooperation with the town, whereby the town would change the zoning to accommodate this development that is not, it's a residential development. It's not allowed by right in the scale that, that is being proposed. So there needs to be a zone change. And what this developer and the town are talking about is what kind of agreements would be, the town would be willing to, to change the zoning to, to accommodate this development. And so what, what the issues are, the town is concerned about tax certainty, especially if this developer someday sells it to a nonprofit entity. There are direct mitigation payments, whether they be traffic payments, or perhaps some improvements of some adjacent town property as mitigation. And there are some community benefits, primarily affordable or workforce housing that would be provided as part of this development. And then finally, because it's adjacent to a town-owned parcel, it makes sense for the town and the developer to exchange some parcels to, to make each of their own parcels a little better. So it's a very coordinated, it needs to be a very coordinated project that the legislative body needs to, needs to agree to. So before I talk a little bit about the timeframe, let's just get right into it. So my experience is that these, these development agreements include a lot of things. And the development agreement is sort of the document that is discussed that catches all of these things. Even though there is a development agreement, there's a zone change, and there's some land exchange, we're going to be talking about that as part of a larger development agreement. And so that's the first phase of this, this scenario. So the first thing I'd like to talk to you about is how does, how does this, this even get to the town? How does, how does it get formulated? How are the parameters of this agreement reached? And typically, that's done at the executive level. It's always really done at the executive level. Probably the developers approached the town, the town hall, and indicated a willingness to talk to the town because they didn't like, you know, the way it would work on a, on as, as, as right, the zoning by right. And frankly, the town doesn't like that either. So, so it has the makings of a deal, potentially. So in, in a council manager form of government, this is a very key point. The mayor or the city manager is the chief executive. And that's different than what your current, your charter currently calls for. Your executive branch of your government currently is really a combination. It's, it's both the select board and the appointed town administrator. Collectively, they serve as really the executive of the community. And the chief administrative officer cannot really accomplish anything without the elected select board's approval and authorization. And so that's a very key point between the two forms of government. So in the city form, the council form, I should say, on the left side, it's the mayor or the city manager that will really, with their staff, do all of this work. And because a mayor or a city manager is not a body, not a public body, they're just individuals, they are no, they are not subject to the open meeting law. Whereas the select board are clearly subject to the open meeting law, and that will require them to be very careful, sometimes going into executive session, sometimes not. And then the other thing I'd like to say on the town side, what you experienced, and maybe you are familiar with this, select board often will appoint a committee. Even though they have staff advising them, the select board sometimes likes the fact that there would be residents of the community, perhaps some stakeholders near that property, and for whatever reason feels the need to create a committee. And so that's a big difference between the council forum, where you have a chief executive, and the town forum, town, town meeting forum, where the executive authority is shared between an administrator and an elected board. And that's where you'll find much of the time element take place in, in these different forms of government. It's upfront, where, where the, the select board would have to meet in public and their new committee. If they created a committee to help, would also have to meet in conformance of the open meeting law. So there's that process, just that beginning process is where you'll see a lot of time taken. And, but on the other hand, in the town forum, you have a lot, a lot more public input. You have a public committee of residents of the community. And so you're getting a lot more information. It just takes a lot longer. So that's the first step. Let's assume that these parties reach agreement or a tentative agreement on a deal, on a development agreement. This is, would be, if it was in the council forum, the manager or the mayor would just simply submit that to the council directly, to the legislative body. Whereas on the other side, in the town forum, the town administrator and this committee perhaps that they're working with at the select board appointed now have to go back to the select board. So, you know, you have another step. Both the city council or the town council and the select board will have hearings and discussions and meetings. And I think those, that process is somewhat similar. But it is an extra step in the process because in a town, you know, the town administrator is not a chief executive and can't go directly to the, to the legislative body, in this case, the town meeting. It must go through the select board. So that's an important point. And then we get to the point where, you know, it can, after the council and, and the council forum has, has convened their hearings and heard, they can just call a meeting and approve it. Now, there are, in many charters, there are time constraints, or there are times, times you need to actually take up this document in a council form of government before it can be approved, but it's relatively quickly. Whereas now, on the town side, the select board have had their hearings. They've approved it conditionally, but they have to go now, send it to town meeting. And whenever anything goes to town meeting that has any financial consequences, consequences, which is most things, then we have the appointed finance committee gets involved. And so in addition to calling the special town meeting, now the select board has to engage with the finance committee. And the finance committee has a series, will hold a series of meetings and potentially hearing and develop its recommendation to town meeting. And then the public communication and, and the education period commences, which I should mention is different, a bit different from the open town meeting and the representative town meeting. Obviously, open town meeting, you don't know everybody who's going to come. You know the universe of people who can come, which is registered voters, but you really don't know who's going to come. Whereas a representative town meeting, you have perhaps a couple hundred people, you know their names, they've been, they've been elected. And there is an ability to actually more directly communicate with that group of people and perhaps do it a little differently than you would if it was an open town meeting where you're communicating with all of the voters in the town. So, so the special town meeting eventually meets and considers the articles and the warrant. So why don't we move on to the next step? And I guess I would stop here if there's any questions about that, that overall process.
Curtis, go ahead.
It doesn't have to be a special town meeting. It could be at the regular town meeting, and the process would go forward.
That is true. Although both of these scenarios, Curtis, I think what we were trying to do was suggest that they, they're coming up for a reason. They're, they're, they're being, they're relevant, they're timely now. And we're assuming, I think in this case, that it just wouldn't fit exactly with the annual town meeting that's already been proposed and so on, but you, you're right.
For a special town meeting, you still have the lead time. I was looking at the outline today, and for the special town meeting proposed for this fall, you still have to close the warrant five months in advance.
Right, well.
I, I think in the case of a, of a special town meeting, and I, I would have to confer with your staff, but my guess is that you can do that in a little bit more expedited fashion. But still, you're right. You have to call the, you have to call the meeting, you have to open a period for the warrant. You have to close the warrant, post the warrant, and so on. So you're right.
I'm sorry, anybody else? Caroline, Kelly? Anybody online? Any Bo or Rachel? No. Mel, I, I'm just sort of curious that if you could scroll back down again to, to show the way you, certainly the way you've outlined this, you know, the, the beginning of this process, it sounds like a town council forum. Given the power of this, of the city manager or the mayor, or what, well, in our, in our case, I guess, city manager or administrator. It clearly sounds like a much more sort of powerful entity, and you know, the, you could see where the process would move more, more quickly through that. What are the, I don't know, safeguards? I, I would think that there would, there'd be people here who like town meeting and say, well, wait a minute, what if we don't like this project? How do we slow it down? How do we stop it? How do we change it? Is that simply, you know, when the town council starts having public meetings, that, that the public can come forward and say, I don't like this idea. I think it's too big. I think it, whatever, you know? Is, is that really the principal break that the, the voters have on, on a project like this?
Right, right. So just the first part, yes, the difference is that in a town forum, the manager is really an administrative off, the chief administrative officer. Where in the council forum, they're not sharing that authority with the select board, and they are a chief executive. So you're right about that. The second part is, yes, the council now has, whatever, seven, nine, 11 members, and they're representative. And so, you know, no one else can pass a, you know, an amendment or propose an amendment. Pat Lloyd will get into some of the, the initiative and referendum type of things that you can do as a resident. But in this case, you're right. The only ability is to really try to influence the council through, through their process. And, you know, obviously, as, as is the case of the select board, there are informal processes. Select board members and council members have their own constituencies and ways to get out into the community, and they will do that as well.
I, I can think of, of one example here on the island where a, a project that was kind of, you know, green-lighted by, I think, town meeting, the various butters to the project started suing the town and the, and, and a particular developer involved. And it, you know, it basically put the whole thing on, on hold for a couple of years. Is, is that still a possibility under town council? I mean, if, if a butters wanted to go to court, you know, they can, I presume, sue the town to try to stop or halt the project?
Yes, I think that, that, that holds in any, any form of government any, anytime, you know, that. There are ways, you know, maybe, maybe in the town meeting forum, there are more opportunities to identify irregularities perhaps, but I, I don't think so. I think if somebody wants to delay projects, then, then there's ways to do it through, through the courts. The reason why we, we picked a development agreement, quite often, a developer will have time constraints, time limitations that they'll, they'll say to the town, and in the agreement, they'll say, you know, this is great. We, we understand there's public processes, but your town meeting has to happen. You have to have a decision before X date. And sometimes, frankly, those, that can't be done with, with the town meeting. And let me go back up to the timeframe. So these are, these are just really best guesses, looking at the various components. But we see that the council manager process for this whole development agreement from the point of of, of negotiating it right, right to the approval, whether it's city council, county council, or town meeting to be of, of three to six months. Whereas with the town meeting and select word, we're talking about nine to 12 months. And in some cases, that might be too long for a developer. But, you know, they'll have to work with the town, and, and that is quick. I would have to say that, that being involved in some of these very complicated development agreements, nine to 12 months is, is a pretty, pretty quick for a town meeting, but I think, I think it can be done. But clearly, we're talking about three to six months.
Got it. Thanks, Mel.
So why don't we move to the zoning? Now, the zoning has been part and parcel of this large development agreement, but we, I think we should tease it out a bit. Because zoning amendments are bylaws. A zoning, a change in the zoning map is a change to the zoning bylaw. And so that does involve some process. Again, you know, in, in the council forum, you have a CEO, the city manager, the mayor is basically taking this agreement and identifying the zoning changes that are necessary and presenting them. Really identifying them. And that is going on also on the town forum. There, you got the select board involved, obviously. And with the case of a, a town council, there's a process for the city manager, mayor, just to get something on the docket for this, for the council to consider. And, and obviously, the big change on the other side is that you have to call town meeting. It's just not the select board that can approve this. You have to call the legislative body of the town meeting. So once the zoning proposal has been identified, the select board then will call a town meeting. They'll insert the, the warrant, and then it goes to the planning board. Now, in the planning board process, for both a, a council and a town meeting forum, they're essentially the same. And you'll see that the planning board will, must conduct a public hearing, and they have to do that within 60 days. So that is the same for both sides. Really, the difference with zoning, I find, is in addition to the preliminary step about creating the zoning, especially when you're dealing with a, a private development negotiation, is the town meeting. There again, the special town meeting will have to prove the zone change. It's a two-thirds vote. Frankly, it's a two-thirds vote either side. For the council, the, the zone change has to be two-thirds vote. Now, there's one point I wanted to make about a representative form of town meeting. Quite often, they're the same processes, except for when you have a, a representative form of town meeting, you have to give the residents who are being represented an opportunity to create a referendum or essentially appeal the act of the town meeting. And that has to be done with a period, within a period of seven days. Now, you don't have that now because you have an open town meeting, but I did want to just point that out as a difference between the open and representative form of town meeting. There's always a process when town meeting acts to give residents an opportunity to vote, to essentially debito that. I don't know if you've ever heard of that, but that happens occasionally in larger representative forms of town meeting. Now, the next part of the zoning is, I think, a pretty significant point, and that is council forums, which are the state-considered city forums, do not require zone changes or any bylaw changes to go to the attorney general for approval, whereas town meeting forums do. So within 30 days after the town meeting is adjourned, the town clerk will have to submit the zoning change to the attorney general and the Commonwealth. Technically, they have 90 days to either approve or reject that. If they don't act within 90 days, the bylaw automatically goes into effect. But it's rare. I, I, in fact, I've never heard of the attorney general not, not weighing in on a bylaw that's been proposed. What they often do is, especially if it's complicated, they'll say, they'll ask the town for an extension beyond the 90 days. And of course, every town doesn't want to deny the attorney general an extension, so it goes on. So even when a zoning amendment gets approved at the local level, in a town form of government, there is an extended period for attorney general approval. It's just the way the law works. It's not required in, in the city forum and the council forum. So I'll stop there and ask if anyone has any questions on the zoning.
Are, are these things going on in parallel?
Yes, in, in this scenario, they are going.
And the, the, the previous section, they're all happening in, in parallel?
Yes, they all are happening in parallel. And that timeframe that was on the first page is what would encompass all of this.
Okay.
Three to six to nine to 12. But I thought it was important that we do drill down a little bit on zoning because in the case of having a, just a separate zoning bylaw, you know, it's the same issues. The town meeting will have to convene, and then we have this other aspect of the, of the attorney general approval.
Caroline?
Thanks. I was wondering, why does the AG have to approve for town meeting but not for town council?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to it. It's been that way forever, and it's just the way it is. I, you know, I, I could guess, but I, I really don't know. The fact of, it's interesting. In some towns, they actually like the town, the attorney general to weigh in because it, it tends to give some legal confirmation, if you will, of, of the town's actions, although it's not final. Anyone in a town, even if the attorney general approves the bylaw, may appeal it, you know, to court, in, in the district court. In the city forum, in the council forum, no attorney general. And if somebody wants to challenge it, they'll have to initiate litigation. So sometimes people in the town think, well, the attorney general process is good because, you know, at least it gives some review, legal review, and people might be happy with it and not appeal it. Whereas in a council forum, you know, there is not that, and some suggest that that invites more litigation.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, yeah, and I, I think this is maybe just to confirm that I, I'm understanding it correctly, and for a point of clarity, I think. Going through this process, going to the planning board for the zone change or doing this is not exempting this activity from any other required permitting from the planning board, so if it needs a special permit or permit from the zoning board of appeals, they still have to go through that process independently.
If, no.
If Mel.
Well, i- unless, yes, unless they unless part of the zoning amendment, you know, varies some of those those rules for this particular zone. But in general, yes. This does not change the need for the conservation commission to issue a wetlands permit or order of conditions or anything like that. That process would continue. And if and if there's a special permit required for this development, it would probably be spelled out in the development agreement. But if it's clear in the zoning by in the other parts of the zoning bylaw, then yes, they would have to do that as well.
And we just hope the scenarios be kind of as simple as possible, even though it's a complex land deal. So it's 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 assuming that you don't need that, you just need the zone change, things of that nature.
All good.
I I must admit, at this stage, I'm also wondering whether your three to six months and nine to 12 months aren't overly optimistic. I mean, it it just, having watched things happen here on Nantucket, you know, on the in effect on the right hand side of the page. You know, any, any, I would think almost anything that has any complexity at all is going to take at least at least a year, if not longer, so.
This is this is assuming ideal conditions.
Oh, you're not on Nantucket?
No, it it, you know, it it is, it is. I I I have to admit, I've only worked in the town meeting forum, mostly represented by some open town meeting. And I will tell you that that nine to 12, it's more on the 12 side than it is the nine. And Anthony can probably tell you, you know, about some of the potential delays on the city side or the council side. But we're probably talking about the 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 longer range of the that time. But, you know, the these, this gives you at least a frame of reference about how 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 long some of these things take.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure. Just what you have to ask me first.
Sorry, my fault.
Yeah, go ahead.
The one on the right has an awful lot more checks and balances. Or is it just my imagination?
No, it's 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 the result of two things. And I I want to emphasize this again. On the on the executive side, on the on the left hand side, you have a chief executive. On the right, you have a chief administrative officer who must share and get authorization from the select board. It doesn't exist on this on the on the council side. So that's that's going to create some of the some of the the language here and time. And then on on the legislative process, it's pretty simple. We have a council who serves as a legislative body and does not have the same kind of time constraints and process constraints as a town meeting. So there 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 you have the extended language on the right side, and that contributes to the extended timeframe.
So my apologies.
No, no worries. But but also, you know, and I do want to say this again.
I I wasn't, I didn't quite understand. Do you, in your experience, do you perceive that the right hand side has more checks and balances? I didn't quite understand whether you answered that or 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 something else.
Well, you know, on the right side, there's much more process, clearly. I don't know if you call that a check and balance, but there's there's much more process. And there is more opportunities for direct input and involvement of of the of the citizenry. I I don't think there's any question about that. What we're talking about is the difference between an open town meeting, which anybody has the ability to 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 vote and to participate, and a council forum, which is a represent your electorate is represented in, you know, nine to 11 people, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome. So we're gonna look, go down to the last element, which are called lands. We call them land swaps, but in this case, we're talking about both acquisition and sale. There's a, there's a, as I said, there was a sort of a symbiotic situation where if the developer could give the town some some of their land and vice versa, it would make each of their own properties work better. And so this is part of the agreement. Now, as we said, this is all part of the agreement. And so we did all the all the town meeting and the council actions are coordinated around this. But if you did land swaps independently of anything else, there obviously is the issue of town meeting. I mean, I mean, it's pretty much the same what we've talked about. You you've got in the beginning, you've got to have somebody put together the deal. That takes some time in a shared environment, executive environment. Whereas, you know, in the in the in the council, the mayor, the manager basically puts it all together with staff and council, I'm sure, and legal counsel, and then would just send it to the council for approval. Whereas in the case of the town forum, you know, the select board has to has to approve that. Now, I do know that there is this unique aspect of the of the Nantucket Charter where the select board can acquire land on their own. And I believe after a period of time, if 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 nobody has petitioned the town meeting to appeal it, it will go into effect. And we're not suggesting we would change that. I think that's very unique, by the way. But in the case where you have a land deal and you need certainty, we just put everything before the town meeting because we didn't want to risk that the select board acquiring that property, you know, could get challenged or whatever. Since so since we're all doing all the other things at town meeting, we threw the land swap in there as well. Land deals require two thirds vote of a town meeting or the council. And once those are approved, you know, they're pretty much the same in terms of recording them and 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 getting them into place. But but it was important to talk about the land swaps there. Any questions? We're going to move on to our second scenario, which is a budget related scenario.
Carolyn.
Thank you. Now, what what is, what's the Collins Center understanding of why Nantucket has that very unusual aspect of the being able to take the lands?
I I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing that the town is pretty active in, you know, acquiring or, you know, land that has is of environmental sensitive nature. And so you probably do it a lot more than other communities. And there was a feeling, given the timeframe that's involved in this town meeting, acquiring land, that these need to happen quicker. That's my guess, that it was given, that the special charter authority was given to the select board. But you have that fail safe, that you have that ability for the town meeting to convene and 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 appeal that or or or, you know, reverse that decision. But I'm I'm guessing it had to do with sort of the nature of some of the land in Nantucket and the need for the town to to protect it.
And Mel, if I could add to that, it probably also has to do with the fact that you are a merged government of a municipality and a county.
Town and town.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So that so we're able to do it, whereas most places would not be able to do it.
That's right. No, no, I I I don't believe I've ever seen that provision in a in a charter that a select board is given a legislative authority to acquire, to acquire. It's very unique. I think it's good. Surprised not more communities have tried it. Maybe they haven't. Nantucket has just been, you know, has the unique situations.
Yeah, my name is Ted Giellini. Yes, following up on 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 that point. So the select board can acquire land. But at the same point, is it also required to disclose to the town meeting that it has done so? Or it can just do it on the QT, so to speak?
I I have the charter available, but well, first, I don't think anything could be done on the QT in a town form of government. I mean, I think the select board meets publicly and they have to post agendas in advance and including items that they may vote on. So I I think that, but, you know, could they do it quicker? And possibly, I think that's the point of it, frankly. You know, that that there may be something that's happening quick and can't wait for a town a town meeting to convene. But I, you know, whether it's done on the QT, I I doubt it.
Carolyn.
Thank you.
All right, Mel, fire away.
All right. So we're going to move on to this second scenario, which is a budget one. Not only a budget, but also financing and legislative bodies in town governments, city and town governments are the only ones who can appropriate funds and authorize borrowing. And in this case, what we've identified is a scenario whereby the town has learned of a an opportunity to acquire a federal infrastructure grant for a very important public works project that's been on the capital plan for a long time, just hasn't been been able to get funding. But given Congress's action, they created this program that is a very narrow window of time and scope. And so the town wants to pursue it. And so what what the proposal or what the scenario says is not only will the town, first of all, the the executive body has to agree, the legislative body has to agree to actually file for that grant. Because a lot of times, these grants have strings attached, sometimes financial issues. And in fact, this one requires a 25% cash share from the town per share. And so this is is a classic situation where you do need executive executive and legislative authority. So let's go down, starting with the council manager forum. In that case, the manager is the one who's sort of meeting with the staff and figuring out, are we going to go for this opportunity? And how are we going to do it? You know, just the usual management discussions about a plan, project planning. Whereas on the other side, the town administrator, they really cannot do this on their own. They can review staff and kind of put together the cost benefits, but they must go to the select board for something of this nature and get their authority to approve, to to file for the grant application. And then the plan for funding, which of course goes to town meeting. And that's, again, the change here in the two forms. Whereas the city manager submits the the plan to the council, they will just then begin to convene their meetings and hearings. And in this case, I think especially engaging with some municipal boards and others who have a stake in the project. Whereas on the town side, here we go, you know, with the select board having to call the town meeting to engage the finance committee and and then eventually, you know, have have the town meeting. Whereas the council, within parameters and timeframes affiliated with the charter, will just schedule the vote and do the vote. Again, two thirds vote for the financing. But there you'll see, when I I see a one to two month timeframe for getting this thing done from start to finish on the council side and at least three to four months on the on the other side. And those timeframes are critical. The reason why we gave you these scenarios is because they have time constraints. And both of these factors, the executive versus administrative and the town meeting versus the council, are the things that create time time with the requisite sort of public engagement, the trade off there. So that's really how we wanted to explain these scenarios to you.
Mel, can I turn that in? Quickly, sort of thinking about the point, the question that was raised earlier about the the balance of the balance of powers is that just on the council manager side, the 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 manager, the executive is is one person, not a public body. So there are there are checks and balances in the fact that there will be public meetings when it goes to the council. And the same with there will be public meetings on the town town side. It just, there are more public bodies involved. So you just have more public meetings just by the nature of the forms. So it's it's not that there aren't, I I think, as Mel already mentioned, it's not that there aren't checks and balances. It's just that one requires more public, just 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 more meetings in general. But there are opportunities for public meetings and public input, hearings and so forth in either in either form.
Right. This reminds me, I think, of a potential airport grant where the federal funds were available and there had to be a certain matching bid from the town. That sound like an example of what we were saying? Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sure. So quite tanguety, a question, so a question is, in terms of the time constraints for accessing federal monies, whether it's a loan or grant. Typically, how much of a factor is that quote unquote time constraint? Are we talking one month, three months, six months, a year, two years? What 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 have you found in general?
It of course depends on on the 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 program. I think in this case, what we tried to do was suggest that it wasn't simple to just come up with the money. There could be a situation, I suppose, where the select board wouldn't have to call a town meeting. If if the 25% share match, for example, could have incorporated in in kind services, so time of the town administrator, the time of the public works department, whatever. But in this case, we wanted to show the difference that a town meeting would take involving this. Whether, you know, they met that timeframe with the grant, I don't know. We we weren't getting into that much detail. Usually, the grant cycles are less than a year. And, you know, there are probably a few months as opposed to several months where you have to make a decision. In this case, we said, you know, the legislative body, for whatever reason, you know, the grant agency said the legislative body had to actually appropriate a match before you could file the grant. So we're kind of fudging that a little bit.
What what would what would concern me in in this process is that it's not only the funding, but it's the devil in the detail, it's the terms and conditions, which the strings are attached to whatever the funding is that would need to be analyzed and considered carefully. And from my perspective, I would think more time to evaluate all of that would be more important than rushing through just to get access to the funding.
I I should comment, I and I wish Tom was here, our select board member.
I think he's online.
Was he? Okay. Tom, I didn't realize you were there. I I know this is actually a little bit off the off the 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 subject we're talking about. But hasn't the town charter been amended or or? I I thought that we had made some change that actually made applying for grants. Certainly, this airport grant that Curtis has used as an example has actually been modified. And I think I think Nantucket has a faster process to apply for and and deal with these grants apart from town meeting. Does that? Does that ring a bell? We'll never know.
Duck on the answer.
Anyway.
Well, I can walk through, like, when we typically apply for grants, our normal procedure is if a funding opportunity comes available, turnaround time from announcement to usual application, I'd say usually maximum is about 60 days for when they put out, like, the state puts out their RFP or the federal government does to accept proposals on that. The town can then, you know, discuss internally if they want to apply. Could apply for the grant. It requires at least a minimum of town manager authorization to to apply on behalf of the town. Then it gets into the review process with whichever agency you're applying to or fund or wherever it is. Then to accept that grant, you essentially are entering into a contract with enter into a contract with the awarding agency. And the way it's set up now is all contracts have to be ultimately approved by the select board. So once that grant is awarded, they provide the terms and condition sheets for whatever grant, whatever contract it looks like. They're all a little bit different depending on where they go. And the select board ultimately has to re-accept that as a contract with whatever agency it is. Also say to to kind of go with it, grants really vary in matching opportunities. There are very few that don't have any match. Those are always like the golden goose that don't have any. There are a lot that do allow for in kind contributions. So in kind, obviously, is already existing staff time or materials that the town is contributing to the project to contribute toward that pure cash amount to go with the agency. That's a little bit different, but sometimes for big grants. But sometimes for big grants, that match can be prohibited. It's not something that's been included in the existing appropriation to whichever department or town, depending upon what it is. I'll just say as a personal example, we recently applied, we're kind of waiting here back for a grant to do some work and dredge on my Comet Pond. And that grant was a $2 million request. If that would have come with a 25% match, we don't carry in our operating budget $500,000 to, to match that. That would require some sort of supplemental appropriation. So that sometimes rears its head.
Then that would go in front of my budgets. And then that would be, that would go in front of the town meeting? After the select board had proposed to go there.
If you were going to do that level of appropriation, Anthony or someone else could happen. But to do that level of appropriation or moving of funds, unless it's in a different allocation in the budget already, would require some sort of town meeting organization.
So the citizens would have to vote to agree to that contract?
Would have to agree to that match.
Which would, which would be the, the, the span of the contract? Which would be the final, the final level on the contract?
I don't believe, and again, you guys can hop in, that when we provide grants, we have to provide a statement of match. If those funds haven't been authorized to be used as match, I don't believe we could even provide that statement to even get to the application.
So what happened on the Maya Comet grant?
Well, that one, match requirement was different on that. So that was a much less, and we'd already had some monies put forward towards it. So we were able to apply. So hopefully we'll find out here. But all right, that's our typical process.
And then that, just, just, the chairman just mentioned the Maya Comet. But that grant, because the match is not such a large number, doesn't have to go in front of the town.
Right. And we'd also had some existing money allocated for that specific project through two town meetings already that were available. That could be used also against that. That money had already been allocated by the town.
So town system at the moment seems to be efficient enough, as, as long as the, as long as the amount is not too large.
I would say that project is an abnormality and that was already done in advance. Because we don't, we frequently don't know what programs the state or federal government are going to be putting forward. And they're dependent on their fiscal year and funding cycle. So they can be really short and notice that they're coming. And also can change with changes in administration or views on things pretty quickly. And you have a, not to hijack the meeting.
No, I'm sorry.
Suzanne Girardi, I just, is it safe to say, or is it correct to say that you're saving time with the town council because it's, it's going through fewer hands and there's less debate about what is the direction of the action of the government that's going to move forward? Like if you only have 13 town councils and you have one manager who has executive power, then they, if they're in alignment with the citizens, right, or not even, they don't really have to recall, go to the citizens for approval necessarily, except at election time. Is that correct? Okay. So you save the time because it's, it can be, the authorities there to make the decisions quickly. Is that safe to say?
I mean, I, I think it's Mel's, I mean, I shouldn't be answering for Mel's. You're getting my opinion, that is.
Well, you know, I'll go, I'll go back to the question that was said and, or the statement was, well, isn't it better? You know, you have more hands in the, in the mix and you'd have more discussion. Isn't that better? And I, I would say generally, of course, if you didn't have any constraints of time or money, those are, those are great. But in, in this case, in most cases, in a municipal form of government, there are those, those constraints. Time, money, just, just the ability of the community to, to pay attention. And to, and so that's the, really the trade off we're talking about. So I think you're, the comments have been very on point. You know why there's, there's a quicker process. And it's because of the lack of, of the kind of steps in the process and the authority that's given to various players to make the government more efficient, so to speak. So I think you're, you're getting the crux of, of the difference between these two forms.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Great. All right. I guess back to you, Mel. I don't know if you have, you want to sort of sum up this, this section or?
No, I think, I think we're good. Why don't we move on to another really important distinction, which is the ability for the public to participate and engage. That's Pat Lloyd.
All right, Pat, give me one second. I'm going to pull up your presentation and then, Aaron.
While he's pulling that up, there was just one other point I wanted to make on Mel's presentation. Especially under the more sophisticated development project. These, these projects are going to town meeting for an up and down vote. There may be discussion at the meeting, but there is not a lot of leeway to renegotiate any development proposal. So for example, if, under the town council system, if town council turns something down, there's an opportunity to fairly quickly see if a proposal can be made so that it's amenable to town council and the developers. Where at town meeting, generally there's not going to be that kind of back and forth negotiation at that time. So that proposal being turned down at that point may start the process all over again for additional, you know, an additional nine months or a year. So that timetable is a little different as well. The negotiation that can happen upfront in that, in that process. So, but let me turn to our next topic. And I've put together this chart of some, these are typical resident participation options. Always, under all forms of government, residents are encouraged to approach, you know, at every level of government, if they have inquiries, if they have a program they want to talk about, if they have issues with what's going on, they're encouraged to talk to this, you know, the select board in a town or, or the individual committees that are, that are in that town and get to that. So what we're talking about in this chart is a little bit higher level. And that is specifically how do you petition the legislature to act or to stop in action? Which is less sophisticated at a rather less process oriented than the informal, simply you could go to a select board and say, could you put this on your agenda? So this is, this is a little bit, a little bit more process oriented. The first two columns, open town meeting and representative town meeting, these are generally controlled by statute. The other thing I wanted to mention is that men, many of, while these are typical participation options, many of them can be changed or altered in some way through a special act charter. The more they would deviate from the typical process, would increase your chances of perhaps the legislature not passing it. But these are typical and there is definitely room for making choices within them. So let me just start with the first line going across. And that is the first basic step of how to get before a legislature, but not necessarily require them to make any specific decision. Many charters and council manager charters have what we call free petition provisions. And that means that with a certain number of voter signatures, an issue can be presented to town council for a hearing. That doesn't mean that town council has to decide one way or the other. But it's a way, should the typical route of asking town council to talk some, about something fails, it's a way to get something before town council to a public hearing, to have the public come and talk and present their case. And that's general, and, and that's an optional measure in council manager charters. But it's something that many of them see as a first step to make sure that items that come before the council. The next line across, in open and representative town meetings, they're called citizen petitions. And it seems like you're very familiar with those. In this circumstance, voters collect signatures to put items on the town meeting warrant. 10 voters are required for annual town meeting and 100 voters for special town meeting. That's basically the same process with open town meeting and representative town meeting. And this is what you see at your own town meetings, that a certain number of votes put something on the ballot, on the warrant, rather. There may be issues with whether those the items placed on the warrant are actually items that can be accomplished by town meeting. But there is that petition, right, under state law to bring these items before town meeting so that they can be heard and discussed by everyone, whether it's an open town meeting or by the representatives at a representative town meeting. The council manager form of this is what is called either a citizens initiative or a resident initiative. And with a threshold number of voters signing a petition, asks the council to take a specific action. The council then has a certain amount of time to decide, are we going to take this action? If not, then additional signatures are gathered and the subject appears on the municipal ballot. The, there's a, the number of signatures required is varied. And the threshold is different in each city, depending, depending on how much access the, the community wants to have for this resident initiative. If that ballot pass, there's also a step in this process where the city attorney will take a look at the petition and make sure it's an action that the legislature can actually, is legally permitted to, to do and, and make sure that the wording is correct. So there, some items may be rejected. Unlike town meetings, some items may be rejected as something that is not permissible under this initiative process. And then the matter would go to a ballot. And if it was passed, then that would be required, required to take legislative action on it. You're probably familiar with this through some state ballot initiatives that might have shown, shown up on your, at your elections. But it's a similar measure for council manager or mayor council forms of government. Now, when you look at the next line, I want to talk a little bit. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Can you give us, in terms of resident or citizen initiative, what? How many signatures? Is this on a scale of 100, 500, 1,000? What?
Sure, it's varied. It's either a percentage of registered voters, or it is a number. So say for example, and, and there's different levels. So just to bring the petition, it's usually a fairly low number. Maybe it's 300 to ask the council to act on it. And if they fail to act, then you may need something more, anywhere from five to 10 to 15% of voters in order to get it to the ballot. It's so varied among different towns. Another measure in towns that want to really make sure that the if, if this is on a special election, there may not be very many people there. So some towns take the added precaution of saying, at least, say, at least 20% of the voters have to participate in order for this initiative to be valid. So for example, if it goes to, if it goes to an election and only 5% of your voters show up for the election, well, then the petition does not pass. Regardless of if 100% of those 5% vote for the, for the initiative, it won't pass. So there are, it's, it's a very delicate balance. And basically what people are striving for is to make it possible to get, to have an initiative passed, but not so easy that this process takes the place of the usual legislative process.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. The, the next issue, I believe you had some questions about what happens if the town, if, if the voters, if the residents disagree with a decision that is made by either town meeting or town, or the town council. In open town meetings, the people who are showing up to vote for town meeting warrant articles are all voters of the town. So in general, most open town meetings are not going to have any sort of appeal process for those, those decisions that are made. Because to then open it up to the voters, elections are expensive. You've already had the whole town weigh in on it at open town meeting. Once, once we start looking at a representative town meeting form of government, there is a referendum process where certain decisions are delayed for a period of time, usually seven days to allow 3% of the voters to request a special election to decide the issue. And, and 20% of the registered voters must, are required in order to reverse the, the representative town meeting vote. So this is an opportunity for people to, to say, well, we don't like what our representatives have voted for and gather enough signatures so that they can put it on the ballot and, you know, and either affirm or reverse what town meeting has voted on. Similarly, when we look at a council manager form of government, to be honest, there, the, most council manager forms of governments, I would say do not have referendums written into their charters, but many do. And this is much like a citizens or a resident initiative in that a certain number of voters sign a petition to ask for a measure of town council to either be repealed or to require the action to be affirmed by voters. So for example, you know, if this were a part of your charter and a land development agreement that was affirmed, there you, there may be a process by which voters could decide to overrule that decision. Now, most charters do contain a list of items that can be reversed and a list that cannot be reversed. For example, emergency measures or borrowing that's required to be done quickly are going to be exempt from referendums so that anything that has to happen in a speedy fashion aren't going to be, isn't, is not going to be delayed by a referendum. So those are, those are, you know, that's an option in the council manager and mayor council. And referendum is almost always included in representative town meeting form of government. So I wanted, oh, I'm sorry, are there any questions?
There's, I, I have another question, sorry to. Under the council form of government, do, does the town council ever seek like an affirmative vote to, to sort of backstop a decision they make? You know, the town council decides, we're going to build a giant new fire station, it's $50 million. We vote yes. And, and, but then do they ever voluntarily say, but we're going to ask for a, a ballot, you know, an election of some sort to let the, let the voters confirm their decision? Or does that, that sort of, doesn't make any sense. They just would never do that.
No, that's not, it's not true that they would never. It's, it's, it's usually in a different part of the process. I am, we didn't discuss that in this chart because this is about the resident. But there is usually a provision in a council manager form of government for the town council on its own to request put something on the ballot to get feedback, either, either feedback that is advisory or feedback that, you know, that would commit to something. So usually, you know, separate from what residents can petition, some town councils often have the power to call a special election to ask about a specific issue.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I wanted to just spend a second talking about something that you've mentioned also, and it's rather a unique construction of Barnstable's charter in that they have what they call an open meeting of the voters. This is not the same as a town meeting, but the town, either the town council or 300 voters can ask the town to call an open meeting of the voters. What's different than town meeting is attendees are not voting on a matter there. Officials, employees and employees are brought in to answer questions. And it's an opportunity to have a large scale discussion about important projects. And, and to have the essential people in the room to answer the questions. And, and to have the essential people in the room to answer the questions. This is similar to free petition, except a free petition, um, voter signatures might. Just mean you now have an agenda item on an existing hearing, um, in a public hearing on a matter. This dedicated open meeting of the voters, it's, it's a unique idea. But it can also be done voluntarily by a town council, it doesn't necessarily have to be written into a charter. For them to have this, this type of a discussion. In fact, many cities and towns will open up. On, on important issues, may call meetings just to have discussions and have all of the right people in the room to answer questions. So, you know, I, I wanted to outline, just emphasize again. That there is a lot of variation, especially in the council manager on, um, what you can do. Um, and the choices that you can make town, under the town meeting, much of these are stat, these are statutory, the right to citizen petition. And so there's, there's not a lot of leeway, um, some, there are some. Options, for example. Some people treat fall town meeting or a special town meeting like. Um, a regular town meeting in that, and then you would only need ten voters to put something on the warrant. So there, there are small variations, um, but especially in the council manager side of it. It's more à la carte, there's, there's choices that you can make, um, to make sure that you have. The resident participation that, that you want for your town. Are there, are there any other questions?
Questions? Just, just the participation from, from the, from the, the basketball I perceive you're from?
Are you from?
No, no, the, the, these folks are from the University of Massachusetts.
Okay, so do, do, what, what, what experience do you have with regards to? To what's going on in basketball with regards to, um. The actual, uh, public participation in, in the, um, in the, in the council, um, situation.
Well, actually, I'm not sure that's a question. The, the, the town of Barnstable, uh, uses a town council form of government. So what is it, eleven councillors?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? So they operate under, uh, the town council form.
Yeah.
The right-hand side of everything we've, we've been talking about today. You know, in fact, it's an open town meeting.
So that's, that, that, what I was wondering is, is it's referenced constantly, not constantly, my apologies, it's referenced with regards to. Of course, it's available, that, 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 that citizen, the citizens are able to participate in the council. Uh, by, by, by approaching, I just wondered if they'd had, if they'd had any experience. With, with how, how punitive is collecting signatures? Even more so, so that, 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 the, the local people there really have disappeared. From, from government, from government.
Actually Curtis, you might, you might.
I'm Curtis Barnes, I went to the Barnstable Town Council. And I was allowed to speak because anyone can speak.
Absolutely.
But the night I went there. There were citizens concerned about a, a low income housing development in the golf course. And there were fifty, sixty, maybe more. Who spoke for an hour and a half, each expressing their concern, so. Part of my interest in the town council is, it gives great access. It gives access to non-resident taxpayers who can go to the council and speak. Gives access to green card people who aren't voters. Who can go to the council and speak, so it gives much more access for citizen participation. And I was there and they let me talk to it.
So, so, uh, that's why I was asking then, because you went to one meeting, you've been to one meeting.
I, and I watch him on Zoom all the time, if you.
So I was wondering, the professionals, I was wondering what their experiences were.
All right, let's see what they say.
Well, each, each council is permitted to create certain rules. Um, with regard to public participation. So they can, for example, set time limits, like each person can only speak for three minutes, et cetera. So, um, you know, as far as. It's, it's different in every city and town is what I'm going to say. And, you know, Mel and Anthony, you, you prob, you might speak to this as well. But I, I really think it's, it's different in every city and town. In town meeting, um, the rules are generally that only, um, residents can speak or. In open town meeting, the voters who are present speak and the rest speak at the discretion of the moderator if there's time. And it might be a little more open in council manager, um, but they each create their own rules.
It, if I, to that Pat, and, and I, I guess I'm careful on this discussion because there can be a conflation of, of terms. Um, the chart that, uh, Pat put together here is on, um. Basically how legislative proposals can sort of bubble up from the community as articulated in the charter. Um, there are, what, what I would sort of call sort of more, I guess, sort of informal processes. By which the community can speak to the council, individual councillors, um, and be heard and raised, raise issues. So I think, uh, to the point Curtis was making. Every city, every, um, city or town council across the state. At all of their meetings, there's an opportunity for citizens to go to the meeting, watch what's going on and importantly. Be heard, um, during a section of me, as this meeting, there's a section for, um, individuals to speak. And so that's usually open to anyone, um, communities regularly ask people to tell them. You know, who is speaking and where they're from, because it's important for officials to understand if they're hearing from. You know, business owners, people who live there, people who live in adjacent communities, things of that nature, so. I, I think part of the point might be about, um, you know, they're having more frequent meetings. Um, and that they have, um, you know, they just, they had, they usually have a section of their meeting to hear from the public, not in the sense. Of a town meeting where all the, the citizens are acting as legislators. Uh, so on a, Pat, Pat, uh, so, so I just want to add that to what Pat added.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I have a quick question, I just want, because your question is so good. Um, clarification on the threshold number of voters. So is that like, you know, when they say like ten percent of the voters, if we wanted to get like, the mother word like for an article or something and. Like ten percent of voters, that nine hundred vote, if we wanted to do something like that right now, like if we were to a council.
You're talking out of the council, so the, the initiative?
Yeah. I mean, is there a max or a minimum or?
I, I think if I would interpret your question was, I mean, uh, Patricia, maybe you can talk a little bit more about. And I know you went through some of this already, under the resident initiative. In terms of when you have a town council form of government. Kind of what are the, you know, how big are the hurdles for citizens to? Either force the town council to deal with something or, or force an election, could you maybe go through those again?
Oh, I'm sorry, just, Pat, before you go, I just see Tom's hand, but I don't know if you guys can see it on yours, on your side.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Tom, we'll get to that, okay?
Now?
Now, now, why, why, why don't you, why don't we let Patricia answer Lucy, Lucy's question, and then I'll get to you, okay?
Um, they're very different under each city and town, some it's very easy and there's two thresholds. The first threshold is just to get the original, um, petition. Before the, the town council and some are very low, I mean, some, depending on the population, might be fifty voters. It might be three hundred voters, um, some might be a percentage like five percent. Um, so the first hurdle is usually fairly low, just to get the matter in front of town council. And then if town council says no, there's usually an additional hurdle and they go out and get more signatures and that. I would say fifteen percent of the voters might be the, might be the average. Requirement in order to get something on the ballot, some are higher. Some of them are percentage of voters who voted in the last election, there's, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of differences. But the, the first, just to get something heard and voted on is generally lower. And then once something, um, is denied, then it's a higher hurdle in order to get to the ballot. And there, there are a lot of choices to be made. And, and like I mentioned, um, there may also be a requirement that at least say twenty percent of the registered voters show up. In order for the petition to take hold and be effective.
Right, and thank you, but who makes up those rules?
Yes, um, the charter committee suggests something and then, and then the process goes through to council. Um, I'd rather to the select board who may suggest something else, um, there'll be public comments. So it, it, when, when you go through the process of creating a charter and putting it on town meeting. There's usually a lot of steps and a lot of comment.
Yeah, that's some.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Okay, Tom, sorry for the wait.
No problem, I just wanted to point out as, as a matter of process that. At select board, of course, we do accept public comment at, at every single meeting, every single week. And there are folks who, who aren't residents who come to public, who come to public comment. Uh, I've made this example before in a previous town council study committee meeting. But we had a couple of folks from Sconset who had some issues with the Sconset, um, uh, bluff walk. And came and voiced their, their concerns at a meeting. Um, so, yeah, so we, there are ample opportunities as we do at Affordable Housing Trust and et cetera. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that, that was pointed out.
Great.
Yeah, and, and there absolutely are many opportunities. Um, and so I just wanted to clarify that these are opportunities to propose legislation in front of the legislative body. And, um, at town meeting, items discussed with the legislature are usually, have to be within the bounds of the warrant. And, um. And the council may, may be more like. How your Board of Selectment operates and, and as far as the legislature taking all types of issues under, under the public comment section.
Suzanne Girardi again, I just wanted to clarify, who, who decides public comment? Like, I mean, you've always been gracious ever since I've been here that we can speak, but in select board, but not every committee is like that, is it?
I'm not an expert on, typically, I would rule the board or so. I can try, yeah, good. And you guys can read, typically, public comment is at the discretion of the board and the chair for what it's on. Um, there are also some distinctions, right, public hearing. Public hearings in front of boards require public comment, that's part of the, the guiding law that brings on public hearings. If it's simply a public meeting, then it's solely at the discretion of that board and chair, unless there's already an adopted. Policy or procedure that says.
No, it is, it's discretion.
Well, and clearly the select board runs much more formally than we do. You know, I, I think we're, you know, our committee is, is investigating. Whether or not we want to convert to town council, um, and clearly as much input as we can get is good, so. All right.
Can I add one more thing? And I promise I'll, I'll stop talking for a bit. Public comment also varies a lot from board to board, some of it's like this where it's very interactive where. You might have a question and we'll have a back and forth. Other boards run very much on, provide us your comment and then we'll respond at a later date. And there's kind of everything in between.
Like, so like for.
And the town manager has just written, uh, the off, office town manager has recently written to remind us that there's not supposed to. Be a back and forth in our public comment, I think in any committee's public comment. So, I thought that was an interesting point.
Technically, when you asked your first question, I technically, everything's supposed to go through the chair, then I.
You make a judgment.
I, I think, I think given what we're charged to do, you know, getting, getting the information out of the conversation is more important, so.
It's a stylistic choice.
Well, it does influence process.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
Alrighty, Patricia, I don't know if we, we cut you off, whether there was, uh, anything else on this section that you wanted to talk about.
No, um, other than if you have any other questions, um, and. Um, we are, we're happy to, you know, or if there's any particular, um, choices that you wanted to ask about. But that's, this part is concluded.
All right, just one more question?
Yeah, go on. So, talking about those threshold numbers again, maybe you said it already and I just didn't process it, like. What would be the procedure to go through changing those threshold numbers if you decided they weren't working well? Charter.
Absolutely, it, it would be a charter change. And any charter that's drafted will have, you know, a provision that's. These days, the recommended best practice would be to put in a provision saying a charter would be looked at every ten years or so or earlier. Um, so it would be a charter change process.
Um, any, any questions from the folks, uh, folks on Zoom?
So, I don't, I don't have a question, but you're, uh. Mentioned about the grant. If I recall correctly, somebody there could maybe remember now that, uh, we see Tom. I believe that that process was only specific to the airport commission. And the select board being allowed to vote for funds so that they could get grants. And I think it might have been in town meeting twenty one, maybe twenty two, but it's not for all towns. So I think that was still a relevant conversation in terms of the grant process. Because I believe that it was just a home role petition specific for the airport.
Okay, I don't, Tom, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I would just add that in, in Libby's comments and then, uh, Brian Turbit coming to our committee. That they, they both said that this is, I, I, this is my word, but a non-issue. In, in, in the past, and, um, I think if we had any specific questions of what happened, we should, we can re, re relay them. To either Libby or Brian or the appropriate town official.
No, I, 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 Tom, I think it was just that the, the belief was that that was all solved. And I think in their presentation of a scenario, it was just. It's still applicable because the time is still there, so you could still call a special town meeting if needed, things like that. But I, I think there was a misunderstanding that whatever was done as a home role petition was across the board and I'm, I'm. Fairly certain it was just related to the airport, but yes, there's many other methods that. Could still be done so that grants could be applied and not missed in terms of the time period, but.
Thank you, got it.
So Tom, can you just, can you say what you just said again, I think I misunderstood it. You were noting, you were noticing Brian Turbit and Libby had, had clarified, what?
That, there, well, there was some talk in our previous, I don't want to speak for anybody, but there was some previous talk at some of our. At our previous town council study committee meetings. That there were a, let's just say a handful of missed grants for whatever, because we have an open town meeting process. And I thought what I heard from Libby and Brian was that, 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 that was, again, my word, what was a non-issue. Rachel's pointing out something specific around the airport, uh, and I, I don't know the, the history or the TikTok of what happened with that, but, um. I, I, I would set that aside for a second and just say that if we had any other questions, we should, we, you know, we absolutely ask Libby or Brian to. Uh, clarify on what happened, uh, previously.
Okay, got a question, Bo, you got a question?
Yeah, um, this is in the charter, I'm not near a computer, but you can look it up. That's it.
Okay, we'll check that out. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I mean, so, and this is to Tom's question. So we talk about like a town council because it's more efficient, like, so are the examples that the town has lost funding, like grants and stuff? You know, in the past couple of years that would have, we had the town council, we would have had that, like, is there, have we?
Sure, I mean, I, I think, do you want to touch on that or?
I, I really don't have a specific, but a year or two ago, I heard the comment, of course. The other thing was, as a water commissioner, the water commission in putting the water line in Tom's way. Went over budget because they had to go to town meeting to get retained earnings released. And, um, Brian said that wasn't a problem. But we put the water line in Tom's way to deal with PFAS without going to town meeting.
I think the most honest answer would be, I, I don't really know, but we can, we can certainly ask. Brian Turbit, the finance director, and see if we can get a more specific question to answer to.
I think the gentleman in blue, I don't know his name.
Mel, did we?
Tom, I think it was.
Oh, Tom, did you want to?
He basically said that, maybe, I think he just basically said that that was a non-issue.
Well, I think that, I think the debate is, is it a non-issue across the board? Or is it only a non-issue for the airport financing? Because I, I think that, I think that that's the, the issue that we don't know quite the answer to.
My fault.
The airport may have the solve, not sure the rest of the town.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes.
Is Anthony going to speak, is he part of today? Is Anthony going to speak? Is he part of today?
Yeah, I don't know. He's up there, he was up there, no. Well, first of all, I want to say Anthony, you know, Mel and Patricia, thank you both very much. I think this was very responsive to what we talked, talked about, uh, at our sort of little planning session 10 days ago. Did you have any other issues or, uh, thoughts you wanted to add, uh, or should we move on to the next?
No, no, you can move on. We, um, uh, sort of, we're going to send this information out to the committee, um, shortly after this. We'll listen to you, Mr. Chair. And, um, again, the scenarios were meant to be high level, not to reflect any particular project. There's, it just, just generally what these things might look like under sort of a generic form of government, so.
Well, I mean, I personally, I found that, I found it very helpful. It certainly, you know, uh, made clearer to me, you know, the, I mean, clear, again, my own opinion. You know, town council, clearly authority and power is much more concentrated and the ability to make decisions and move things forward is, you know, relative to that faster. And clearly you could see in open time meeting, the fact that there is more citizen input, uh, but there's just a process that takes a lot longer. I mean, there's just more, more boxes to check and more things to do, so, um, okay.
Can I, on that note, can I just ask, is it Mel, the gentleman with the blue jacket? In your experience, and, um, young gentleman just mentioned that it's a lot quicker, but there, there was one, one scenario there about developers. And, and, and because the value of, of, of small pieces of land on Nantucket seems to be quite a, a, a sizable amount. I wonder if, if the fact that, um, would there not be a lot more litigation involved with the town council? Because typically, the town council would make a decision and somebody wouldn't like that decision, a developer or a, a fairly wealthy neighbor. So as we found in the last year or so about other topics, litigation seems to be creeping, creeping into the situation a lot more. And I wonder, in that developer section, have you found more litigation? In your experience?
I, I would say not, um, you know, the, there was no shortage of litigation and open town meeting and representative town meeting forums. I can assure you, I've experienced that a lot, so I don't think there's anything, uh, germane to each, each of that, that function that, that spurs more litigation than not. Uh, but I would say that, um, you know, that a council form of government is a very legitimate form of government, will be approved by the legislature in this case. So there's really no question that they have the authority to do that. So, uh, it's just similar to town meeting. Uh, sooner or later, you know, your government will make decisions and you have to live with them or, or you could, of course, always file litigation. But I, I'm not sure that the basis for, uh, the litigation would be any, any different based on that form of government, in my opinion.
Thank you. Great.
No, I was thinking, I'm trying to find my notes. I thought Pat, Pat, when you were reviewing things, you were pointing out that with a town council forum, if, if the citizenry had issue with it, that the way to deal with it, I wrote down, it's a kind of a protest form of process. Where you have to, you have to make a stink, as it were, to, to stop the legislative process. And so I'm wondering, I'm trying to remember what you said about the form that that took. And I think you said it was a complaint or a protest or a.
It's a referendum.
A referendum, okay.
And, um, you know, there's certainly, um, the ability to attend public hearings before the decision is made. Um, and, you know, input at that level, if the decision is made. However, um, some council managers have adopted, and, but not all, um, because some are concerned about delaying, you know, important decisions. But, um, some haven't ad- adopted the, an opportunity for citizens to petition to overturn a decision that's been made. Um, and, and there's usually exceptions for types of decisions that can't be overturned, like emergency situations.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and of course, I just want to say there's also, um, you, the usual zoning appeals and, and, you know, your other typical things that aren't necessarily charter level or legislative processes that, um, that people will be getting involved in at all levels.
All right. Okay, any other questions for the folks in the Collins Group? Going once. All right, Anthony, Mel and Patricia, thank you all very, very much. I think this was very helpful. But the, the, we have two other sort of agenda items that I would like to touch on, uh, before we adjourn. The first is when we, I think before we broke up last time, we talked about trying to have a, um, it was a, the issue of public outreach and communicating what we've been doing to the public. And I think the issue was raised about gee, wouldn't it be great to have a flyer or a memo or something at a town meeting next week? That take advantage of the crowd, if you will. Um, so I did contact Sarah Alger and unfortunately, we're not allowed to do that. So, um, it was a great idea, but not, not permitted, I'm sorry.
Um, I would point out, however, that in Libby's, uh, email yesterday, she referenced the fact that the town council had been meeting. So if you look at that down in sort of the second page, I was very pleased to, to see that she did acknowledge that we were meeting and looking at some of these questions.
Well, what I would like to suggest, and I think, uh, Caroline, this is your idea, is, is I think we ought to, uh, write a letter to, uh, I mean, it's all the short-term, uh, rental memos are all going to disappear in about a week, so there'll be some space we can, uh, but, um, but I think it would be worth sending, sending out a letter to the editors and kind of tell the public what we've been up to, kind of summarize what we've done today. And I, I'm happy to help, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at you, Caroline, is that something, would you be willing to start it?
And I have already started. I was just waiting for our meeting today to finish, uh, a sketch. I'll send it around so everybody can. Um, I'll send it through you and we can all feel comfortable with what we're putting out there.
I think it's a great, I think it would be great for a step forward and, um, you know, there may be more education outreach that we can do as, as we move along, but I think we got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Great.
Uh, I might comment. I, uh, I was at the Builders Association the other night and, um, they had Steve Cohen reviewing all town meeting articles coming up that would affect the builders. But I was able to give them a five-minute briefing on the fact that we're having the town council, uh, and we're working on this stuff and some of the advantages that I saw from it. Um, and so again, I'm looking at every civic organization, certainly Sconset Civic this summer. Every organization, remember, there's a 32 that I sent a list to. I'd go to Rotary, I would try to get us engaged in any organization just to say, here's where we are and here's what we're doing to tie in with the letter. And I will tell you, the builders were thrilled. I got applauded at the Builders Association for reporting.
That's really great.
So the more the better.
To that end, uh, the Brown Point Association would like to see if you could join me so in the summer for our annual meeting, so that we could give off our.
We got to get to every association.
Yeah, so.
And Sconset Civic is the big one, I understand too.
So how, how should we, um, how should we do an outreach to these various civic associations? Should each one of us take a couple of them?
Well, I think, you know, I think actually the Nantucket Civic League can do a lot of that work for us.
Yeah.
Um, Charlie and Peter, Boris and, you know, they're, they offered. And I think we go back to them and say, you know, we're, we're a little bit closer to being ready for prime time, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, but I think, I think the step before telling them we want to go out and talk is, let's get something out in public. And then I think we need to convert that into, you know, a handout or something.
Well, the letter will give us a springboard then to address and people raise questions. I'd say Rotary would be a good shot as well, you know.
The one thing though is, you know, for the Brown Point Association, because I'm on the executive committee, we are planning now who our speakers are. And we're inviting, and we're inviting people. Um, and our annual meeting is in July. So if, uh, and I think a lot of other civic associations have, um, their annual meetings in the summer. So I think actually it would be better for us to start interfacing around that now because otherwise we won't miss that opportunity.
Well, why don't I, I'll, I'll take that on then. I, I'll, I'll email Peter and Charlie and basically say, hey, we're, we're sort of planning our summer calendars here. Yeah. Can you please let all your associations know that we'd be, we'd love to come and tell them our story?
Well, Kate Murphy told me that Sconset meets in August and they're already saying the agenda, so we should jump on that too. I volunteered to do that.
Great.
Okay.
I sent out, in the, in the last two weeks, I sent out a list of dates through June. And I, I basically kept our two-week, every other week, um, sort of process through June and then only put in one meeting, sorry Curtis, in July and August. Um, I hope that's okay with everybody. I know that a couple of you sent back, you had conflicts and what have you, that's just, we're going to have to live with that. I, some of them are, I have not, myself. Um, that was one thing. So if there's anybody out there that really hates the, the dates, let me know.
No, I thought you did a great job.
Um, and then as far as our agenda for, uh, our next meeting, the 15th, um, we had talked again last time about having a representative of the Barnstable, um, town come and talk to us and Curtis hasn't been able to get the, it's the town manager, right?
Yes.
Um, is available, uh, is Tom Dixon still on, on board here?
Correct.
Tom, you, you had mentioned you have a friend who's, uh, part of the representative town meeting at Fairhaven. Have you ever heard back from that person?
Uh, yeah, there, I think they're willing to do it. I just, I wasn't sure on the date, so let me, let me get back to him and I'll, I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah, if the 15th would work, that would be great.
Okay.
And then, uh, so that would be the, I think the bulk of the meeting. And then I think we could also spend some time, next time, you know, sort of doing a where are we and where we, where do we want to go kind of conversation. Um, in terms of, um, any more education, is there, is there more, is there more information we need to gather? Or are we sort of more prepared to go forward for the direction?
Don't take this the wrong way, okay? But, uh, so, so you're, you're suggesting these people, and I know, I know we all live here and everything like that. And I assume you're all very smart people because you're participating in something that's kind of challenging. You've mentioned that you're going to have a basketball representative of the town, and you're going to have a Fairhaven, is it?
Yes, we, it's, it's a Roman. Uh, Tom, Tom, oh, Tom, sorry. Yeah, so that Thomas has a representative town meeting, form of government, Barnstable was the town council form.
Yeah, so, and we, we reached out to any other, any other.
We've already had two or three from other communities before.
Yeah, other what?
Peo- other people.
Other towns, uh, have been spoken to.
Yeah.
Town council, yeah. I wasn't actually going to ask you that. I was going to ask you if we'd had other, um, um, select boards represented some other towns to come and represent what they've experienced and what, how, and, and are they pleased with what they're still doing? Because obviously this has gone down this road in other towns as well, and they've decided to stay with where they, where they're at rather than go to this, to this situation. I wondered, uh, uh, has anybody, no?
I think that the Collins Center had suggested that.
Not a bad idea.
Uh, I, I'm, am I remembering, I think it was the Collins Center who recently brought something like that up there, but it was important to pick the right uh, um, select members to come and speak to us. Do you remember that? It was recently.
It was on our Monday meeting, the debrief, where we talked about.
Yeah, and I don't know where that went.
I don't know.
I, I was thinking more, not necessarily, Caroline, my apologies, not necessarily somebody from the Nantucket Select Board perhaps, somebody that's gone through this process.
That's what we're referring to, yeah, that's what we're referring to.
I think there was going to be some, like identifying of, of those possible spots, but I also think we left that discussion as having the committee level discussion as a little bit of a debrief to like get everyone put back together and then figuring out what more information we want to get, where we want to go. Uh, if there's an end product, we need to start working on and get information while we're doing that. But I think we've personally hit a little bit of that spot where I don't think we necessarily are not gaining more information, but need the committee to take a little bit of a introspective look on what more we are looking to get. That's a super helpful suggestion, for sure.
Um, yes, I, we'll, we'll talk, Anthony, we'll talk on Monday about this, but, um, just being more concrete. I think if you and Mel and Patricia can think about a town that has, uh, you have gone through this process, um, comparing town council with staying open town meeting, um, and stayed open town meeting, it might be an interesting perspective here, um, as to why the, um, why the initiative did not go forward. So you can just kind of put that in, in your thinking cap, if you will.
And they might regret the fact that they didn't.
Yeah, just, I, I just wanted to just let the committee know is, um, because we did talk about this on one of our Monday debriefs, and so we are putting some thought towards that. But also just, um, keep in your minds that in Massachusetts, most communities aren't permitted to go from town meeting to another form of government, depending on their population.
They're too small. Anything under 6,000 has to be an open town meeting in Massachusetts. That's more than half of the town too.
Fair, fair point. All right, um, I think that is it. Does anybody else have any other issues? Questions?
Just, just to facilitate, uh, what we were just talking about, where, where, what neighborhoods are we all from? And are, are you guys having an annual meeting coming up? In your neighborhood?
Hussey Farm in August.
Yeah, I'm in the neck of the woods, in the Hummer Pond.
What is, what's, what's your association?
I don't think, if you live on that.
There we sit in a separate association then, not just Hummer Pond.
Yeah, well, Hussey Farm Association is, um, Hussey Farm Road and the streets in there. I don't know if Hummer Pond has a, has a particular neighborhood designation or not.
Well, maybe you could, you guys, well, you are, you are going to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to call Peter, uh, and Charlie.
I'm, I'm town, I'm not, I don't have a local area like Grand Point.
You guys don't have an association?
No, I've got Nancy Martin. I don't need an association.
I do not live in an area that has a homeowners association.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get the, I'll get the list.
That was a gratuitous comment.
All right, um, I, okay, if this, if we have no, I'm sorry, Lucy, I have a question.
I mean, this is a quick question. So, and it just keeps coming up every, every, um, two weeks. So like a town council is better for the non-taxpayers, but the non-taxpayers, like this is the fact between Tom and Curtis, but they already can speak at.
Yeah, we're talking about non-resident taxpayers.
But they can already speak at, because this actually came from the Builders Committee, you know, because you can speak very well. And then somebody had a lot of questions and I wasn't able to answer them. So the, the questions they asked was like the non-resident taxpayers, they can speak for like.
And the green cards, the, the people, the 3,000 people who are here who can't, who are not registered voters, but are resident green card holders can also go.
To a town council, but they cannot go to the select.
Absolutely not. They can't get in the door, or they can go to the select board.
Select board, okay.
They can't go to town meeting. Yes, they can. Well, they can sit in the stranger's gallery if they want, yes, but they can't say anything.
Okay.
They can go to the town meeting.
So there's no difference there, like they're both town council and they open, the select board are the same.
Yeah, yeah, it's comparable access, I think, yeah.
I, I just wanted to.
I just wondered, the, when you present to the different boards, which I think is a very good idea to get people thinking about what you're doing instead of it being thrown at, you know, all at once. My question is like, is it going to be a balance, like what's positive and negative, the strengths and weaknesses? Or is it a focus on not pitching, but kind of pitching the town council and why you would want that? Because I mean, just today, it was really clear that there are pros and cons to all of them. And I think, you know, if you want people to think about it, you don't necessarily want to spoon feed them.
No, well, that, that's fair, um, but, and I, and I'm not sure how many of the meetings you said, I know Lucy's heard this before, but the, the issue that we're wrestled, that we as a committee wrestle with is we were formed by a citizens article, the town meeting, Curtis, Curtis' article, right? The article basically says, form a committee to write, to study and then recommend, um, going, going forward with a town council, form of government. The select board, Tom and Lucy, have basically asked us, don't be quite too hasty, you know? Make sure you've reviewed all the waterfront. But in the end, we have to decide, well, what, what are we going to do? Are we going to write a, you know, we could, we could write a report and say, well, we're all done. You know, people, you decide what you want to do. My own personal view is we should stick with the original, original charge. Do our homework, write a, you know, kind of write a presentation, uh, write a charter and recommend that we go to town council. And then ultimately, it's only going to go to town council if town meeting and the voters at the ballot box go for it. Um, and it's Lucy, I mean, I, I'm sort of, personally, I'm already sold, but I want to make sure that we're kind of.
Same.
You know.
I think if I may add on, I, I think it's the role when we go out into the public to, to talk to those groups or, or to any group really. First and foremost is to. First and foremost is to, you know, make the information available for people to help. Educate themselves on both how our government should be functioning now, and. What's being talked about for town council, and even representative town meeting. And let people digest the information in their own way, right, we're all gonna understand it differently, that's gonna impact. Any change is gonna impact me differently than it impacts Chris or impacts Lucy, or whoever it's gonna be. And people ultimately have to decide at town meeting to make that vote one way or the other. And getting them the best information possible to make their choice, I think is really, you know, critical. I do agree with Joe that I think everyone has their own opinions where it should go, and especially those people that have here been participants. But I don't get to vote for you. Get to vote for yourself, and I think making sure that people have the best information possible is really the the critical part. We can explain the pros and cons of both, but ultimately, we're all gonna have to decide.
Right, and and I suppose one could say, you know, uh. I I, my feeling, my opinion is this, but as representative speaking to your group today, um, this is what our, this is the process of our group right now. You can always distinguish your own opinion from from the group's opinion, um, but I do think, Joe, it's interesting what you were saying that. Um, that, because I I'm still trying to understand which it is. I did, were we given a task that we are just going to do? To study a town council form of government and to write up what that would look like for Nantucket? Or, as I thought I heard the select board say to us. Can you please? Go back a bit, look at all the different possibilities, make a decision what you guys all think would now be good for Nantucket. And then decide if you're gonna go forward and write something up, and then go and do that. So, and that's really very two different things, and I think it's interesting that in our group process right now, we're still. We're, we're not even entirely sure which thing that is that we're doing.
Well, let me say, we're, we're, we're sort of running to the end of our time, and I think that. What you just described is exactly what I think we should spend some time at the at the next meeting, because I think we have to. Make sure we all understand what what our options are, and then make a decision, uh, because I I don't think we can, at some point, we have to say, are we gonna? Recommend town council and do do the next set of tasks necessary to put that on the, on the warrant and make, get it ready for um, uh, ballot. In two thousand twenty-five, or are we gonna come to some other conclusion, which is, you know. You know, we don't think, we don't, I don't know, I don't know what the other conclusion would be, in part because. You know, I've already made it my mind, so, um, yeah.
Could I ask you, when you send out the next batch of stuff? To include a copy of the article that was approved. At town meeting, which is not to look at every form of government. Now, the select board asked us to broaden it, we were, we're doing it anyway, we have to. But look at the article, the article says, prepare a proposal for town council. And if the committee says no, or they say no, then turn it down, it's up or down. It's not Plan A, B, or C, it's A or no. Up or down, that's, that is the article.
Yes, and yet, select board threw a curveball in, and so we are all holding on to the.
But our charge is still to follow the charge of town meeting with the article. We've looked at all the varieties many times, we've had great input, I mean, this has been really good. But the fact is, having taken all that data, now you go back to the charge. The town meeting gave us under the article, and either do it. Or the report says, we don't think it's a good idea. That's my.
Well, we also have twenty thousand dollars tied to the select board's condition. Um, towards our consultant, and so in a way, we we accepted that contract, if you will, if I could use that metaphor with them. When they asked us to agree to.
That, that, that's true, but but their resource is available, not just to teach us about representative town meeting. It's also to write a charter, help us with public outreach, so, I mean, that that resource has a broader use, I think, to the committee than simply, you know. Research.
Certainly, but a- as I heard it, the select board said, we will, um, we will authorize this. Under the condition that you guys are broadening your, which we did, we we did broaden our.
I think this is a great topic for.
Clearly, it's something we're gonna talk about a lot in two weeks, um. Everybody, I I think I I need a motion to to close, any motions, motion to return? Jeff?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Bo, you still there? Oh, all right. Kelly?
Hi.
Joey? Thank you all, interesting discussion, um, all the folks from Collins, thanks again, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your questions.